Yeah, the city has better lights. All right, commissioners, let's call this workshop to order. It is Tuesday, February 25th, 2025 at 2:00. I'd like to welcome our colleagues from the city to the county commission courthouse chambers. I do want to say that Commissioner Cummings is regrettably not going to be able to join us today. Chauncey, her aide informed me that she has pulled her hamstring and is at TOC, unfortunately. So let's send some prayers out to Commissioner Cummings, hope she heals quickly, but she is not going to be able to join us today, so. You know, I told her that's the reason I don't pull my hamstrings. Ain't doing a whole lot of trying. All right, so let's see here. Guess we're going to kick it off with Artie. Is that you got an item for us? Or are you just going to go through the comp plan stuff, Artie?
I can just go through the comp plan stuff.
Yeah, yeah, carry on, man, you have it.
Thank you, Chairman, Mayor, Commissioners. It's my pleasure to provide an update on the land use and mobility element projects. We'll touch a little bit on public engagement, present draft goals and objectives, talk about how those set the framework for a future land use map that will be coming back to you, and then happy to answer any questions that you have. I'm also joined by the consultant team half, who will also help answer questions if you have any.
Artie, if I could, before you get started, just remind everybody that the county has a 3:00 workshop on the Southside Action Plan. Are y'all doing that one too with us? No, okay. So we have a 3:00 workshop in here noticed for Southside Action Plan, so we have to be brief, both in our staff commentary and our commissioner feedback or whatever. Yes, sir, thank you.
Just as a reminder, our Tallahassee Leon County comprehensive plan is made up of 12 different elements. Nine of those elements are statutorily required, and three of them are elements that our community thought, even though they're optional, would be good for us to have and appropriate to have. But as directed by you, both the board and city commission, this effort is to really focus on two of them, and that's the land use and mobility elements. These really are logical elements to start with. The land use element is six times longer than the next longest element, so it really is the bulk of the comprehensive plan. And then the mobility element is also logical to include with that as land development patterns and transportation systems have a profound impact on each other. When we look at each of those 12 elements, they're all arranged by goal or goals, objectives and policies. The goals representing kind of your visionary, aspirational, kind of overarching vision of what you want to see in the community. The objectives are your desired outcomes, and then your policies are your steps and strategies you use to achieve those desired outcomes. So if you are following the steps and doing the strategies, you'll achieve those outcomes. And if you achieve multiple outcomes, then you reach that goal that you have. So that's the structure of it. Today, we're focusing on goals and objectives. We'll be coming back in the future with policies. But this is kind of the structure of how comprehensive plans are put together. It's also important to note the relationship between the comprehensive plan and land development code and kind of the purpose of the comprehensive plan. So as I mentioned, the comprehensive plan provides that kind of higher level, larger vision. And your land development regulations get into the real specifics. An example of that is your comprehensive plan may have a goal of providing safe, efficient transportation system. And then you may have an objective kind of with a desired outcome of having a bikeable downtown. And then the policies of how you achieve that would say that bicycle parking is required for all new development. And that's kind of the extent of what you would see in the comprehensive plan. But then your land development code is where you would have, this is how to calculate exactly how much bike parking you have to provide. These are the types of bike racks that meet the requirements. You know, we want ones that are mounted into the ground, not one that you can pick up someone's bike and the bike rack and walk off with. So it would include kind of really the specifics of, you know, what kind, how much, you know, where on the site would you put the bike parking? You know, it would be in the front of the building so people can access it, not kind of hidden away in the alley behind where you're concerned someone's going to steal your bike. So this is really the relationship between your comprehensive plan and your land development regulations and the level of detail that you would see in each one. The comprehensive plan also serves as the roadmap for how we grow and develop as our population grows into the future. And when we look at the median population projections, which is statutorily the projections that we look at, we see steady, moderate growth. We're not exploding growth as a community, but definitely growing enough that we need to proactively plan to do that in kind of an orderly fashion. When we look at the goals and objectives for land use and mobility specifically, we started this effort looking at community values. And we did that first by looking at the existing land use element. We pulled together a report that was the state of the land use element, identified what's working well, what's not working with the current element. We then evaluated 17 different community planning documents and started kind of identifying themes that we saw in each of those. We brought both of those reports to both the board and the city commission. Those were accepted. We then did extensive public engagement. We had an online survey that had over 1,000 people responding to it. We did six public workshops with over 80 citizens attending it, all focused on community values. When we brought the consultant on in September of 22, 2022, they built on those efforts and did discovery discussions with various stakeholder groups. That's environmental advocates, neighborhood advocates, developers, the chambers and the business community, as well as Southside neighborhoods. And really kind of heard what they were thinking and what they were feeling in terms of the community values. They did an educational roadshow with four meetings in different locations with 65 attendees and a vision survey that had a 519 responses. All of this effort culminated in these community value statements or the vision framework. And that's, you know, being stewards of the environment, growing conscientiously, being a connected community, recognizing that we are a diverse community, being community focused, and also being a prosperous community. And these really set the stage for kind of building off of those and developing land use and mobility goals and objectives specifically. Again, more public engagement. As staff, we reached out to the community specifically on goals, did a workshop with local planning agency, actually multiple workshops with the local planning agency, did six public open houses. We engaged citizens committees like the Water Resources Committee and the Joint City-City Bicycle Working Group, the Advisory Committee for Quality Growth, really kind of getting input from our established citizens committees. And overall, we had participation from over 128 citizens working specifically on goal language. We then went back and said, okay, we have goals, let's work on objectives. Did digital workshop, this is actually before it was cool to do digital workshops, did nine in-person community open houses, five deep dive workshops for people who really wanted to get into the details and look at the data and analysis and, you know, figure out like why we crafted things a certain way. Held a Rural Economic Development Summit in Woodville and hosted a Village Square event on How Shall We Grow? Bringing the consultant on, they built on those efforts and did exploration tours of six different places in the community. So we asked people to walk around Bannerman Crossing and Midtown and French Town and Southwood and Woodville and take a survey of like what kind of development patterns did you see? What do you like about this area? What would you change? Those kind of things. Did another survey with community, called it the Building Block Survey with 60 responses. And then they hosted four different workshops across the community, asking citizens to identify places and actually point on a map of where they would want to strengthen the area, transform the area, enhance or preserve it. So we called it the Step Framework for Strength, Transform, Enhance and Preserve. The culmination of this, six goals. So the first goal is a healthy environment. This is very intentionally the first goal. And this is really a goal looking at, with regards to land use and transportation, how do we have a healthy environment? We do have a conservation element. This does not replace the conservation element, but it complements what we find in the goals, objectives and policies of that conservation element specifically related to land use and transportation. And so this is things like protecting natural areas, having access to green spaces and open spaces, and managing our urban forests. The second goal is distinct and distinct urban and rural areas. That's really kind of recognizing that we have very distinctive rural areas where you have agriculture uses and activities and forestry uses and activities. We have suburban areas with very distinct neighborhoods and activity centers. And we have a vibrant urban downtown with multiple districts. So you see activity in the Cascades area, in College Town, in neighborhoods like All Saints, even like the chain of parks and things like that. And even the Capitol complex, especially when legislature is in session. And this goal really is about, as we grow as a community, growing in a way that retains the things that make us distinctly Tallahassee and distinctly Leon County and not losing our character as we grow as a community. Goal three, healthy neighborhoods and vibrant places. This goal is really about, you know, those distinctive areas I just mentioned, making sure that they are well-connected to transportation systems and opportunities for recreation, that there are places where you can walk safely, where you can be in close proximity to the goods and the services and the jobs you need to meet your daily needs. Goal four is greater housing diversity. And this goal is looking at not only things like affordable housing, which is part of it, but really the entire range of housing types. Recognizing that as people are in different stages of life, they may have different housing needs. So we have a huge student population in this community, and so like student housing is a type of housing that we need in this community. But we also have young adults starting their careers, and so they may have a specific type of housing that works best for them. Then we have like couples starting families that may or may not have kids. And then later on, those kids go to college or start the workforce, and so they become empty nesters. And their housing needs may change based on that. They get older and they may need different type of housing to help them live independently, or they may need some assisted living types of facilities. So really looking at having a diverse array of housing types, not just having an adequate supply, which is important, but having a supply that's diverse enough to really meet the needs of different people in different stages of life. Goal five is about a robust economy. This is really, you know, having jobs and the ability to do job creation. It's looking at, do we have the mix of land uses? Do we have the transportation network that's needed to support economic development? Is there enough land for infrastructure or industrial uses and manufacturing and commercial uses? And do we have a transportation system that connects people from that to the market? Can you get your goods to the airport, especially if we're implementing things like the foreign trade zone? Can you access Interstate 10 so you can truck things? But this is really about jobs and job creation and really kind of making sure that people who move to Tallahassee and Leon County or students who come here and want to stay here after they go to school here, or even honestly like the children that are being born today at the hospitals down the road, because we are looking 20 or 30 years in the future, making sure that we have a system set up for them to have a prosperous future with lots of opportunity. And the final goal is a balanced transportation network. And this is looking at the entire kind of connected system of different modes of transportation. So complete streets. And, you know, that's everything from interstates to major roads to local streets. Looking at bicycle and pedestrian facilities and trails, looking at rail and transit and aviation facilities and that, you know, the airport today, but it could also be some new emerging technologies like self-driving cars or advanced air mobility and those kind of things. And really making sure that our transportation network is well-coordinated with the land uses in our community. So making sure that you have the right type of transportation facilities in the right location, as well as making sure that the system kind of functions together to help support all of the other goals that I just mentioned. So these are the six goals, and they have associated objectives with them, all in your agenda materials. And when we look at kind of the next step of developing policies and coming back with the future land use map, these goals really come together to set a framework for how we'll do that. You know, when we look at the first goal, a healthy environment, we're looking at preserving natural areas and canopy roads and things like that. You know, we're looking at national forests and state forests and state parks and local greenways and all of those kind of things. And we can map those out. We often, as planners, call this our green print. And so we have a framework for that, identifying and preserving those natural areas. Then we look at kind of the next layer out, and that's having rural areas that we want to protect from premature development. And then we have rural communities that serve as hubs or nodes that support the rural areas. So, you know, Fort Braden and Woodville and Chairs and Micasuki and Capitola and these different areas that are spread throughout the community and do serve the surrounding rural areas. And then we have areas that we have acknowledged are on the edge of our urban services area. They've started to develop, and we see higher density development there than we do kind of further out in the rural areas. But they're still kind of rural in nature. And so kind of capturing that existing development pattern and looking at that and mapping that. Having a framework for smart growth. You know, we have an urban services area, anticipate coming back with policies associated with an urban services area and what that looks like, having multimodal transportation district, having a downtown core where you have the most intense types of uses there. Areas where there's infrastructure today or infrastructure is planned and how this can support infill development and how this can support redevelopment. And this includes things like evaluating non-conforming uses and how do we address those? Specifically looking at areas like the lake protection land use category, where we know there are non-conforming uses today. And by addressing those, we can improve the quality of development while also addressing some of the things and getting to the goal of that land use category, which is protecting Lake Jackson. Having a robust economy is, part of that is coordinating that vibrant downtown with a multimodal transportation network. So we kind of see how that plays out on the map and what that looks like. And then a balanced transportation network, making sure that we are designing and building corridors that align with land use context. And so that's looking at, you know, in neighborhoods, having streets and local roads in other areas. Recognize that the roads are kind of bigger, we may have gateways into the community. And these are areas that we're looking at evaluating the densities and intensities along these major roads and corridors and gateway features and making sure that we're increasing the densities and intensities along these corridors, but doing so while having good urban design and making sure that we have urban design standards that overall improve the aesthetics and the development along these major corridors and gateways into our community. And then finally, having special districts and nodes that meet really unique needs. So these are areas that maybe are master planned. They're areas that may have specific requirements, such as like the airport or power plants that have very specific federal and state standards that they have to meet, as well as other places that might not neatly fit into a land use category, kind of recognizing that our community does have special districts like that. So kind of as I mentioned, this is today presenting the goals and objectives. We'll be going back out, doing public engagement, refining and polishing policies. That includes things like the urban service area and the future land use map. We'll be working with the local planning agency over the next couple of months as well. And then coming back later this spring and early summer for your consideration of those goals, objectives and policies, basically the entire future land use and mobility element together. So today, our option, recommended action is option one, to conduct this workshop, but also accept the report on the land use and mobility goals and objectives, really trying to confirm that the direction we're heading is the right direction with those six goals and the associated objectives that you have. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Artie. Commissioners, we traditionally take a motion before we get into discussion. Does anyone like to make a motion? Oh, I have a, okay, I have a motion and a second on staff option one. Commissioner Maddox, Commissioner O'Keefe on the second. Commissioners, we'll get in discussion. If you guys want to ask Artie or any of our staff questions and provide them some input or feedback, I would remind you that we have about three minutes per commissioner if you want to participate in that. And I'll just kind of start with Commissioner Minor and work our way around the table. Commissioner Minor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, appreciate it. Artie, thank you for the presentation, I appreciate it, as well as the briefing. One thing that I've been talking with Artie and the Fall about for quite a long time is, is what can we do to help elevate the overall aesthetics of some of our key gateways? You know, for example, when parents are taking their college students along Pensacola Street, you know, they should be liking what they see. South Monroe, I mean, North Monroe. When we, when the public invests a lot of taxpayer dollars in some of these key areas, these key gateways, what can we do to help the private sector properties elevate their eyes stares so that it helps complement the public investment that we're making? And there's one objective here, objective 2.6, which is recognizable places. This basically helps us identify and attract, like, protect distinctive, attractive places that are recognizable and important to the community. One thing that Artie and the Fall and I have talked about is an effort that they're undergoing right now, which we will see, I think, with the policy release, which basically takes a look at some of these key gateways and looks for, looks for design incentives that we can offer builders and developers that will help them elevate voluntarily, follow elevated design standards so that we can make sure we maximize the public investment in those gateways. For example, a good one is Carepoint, you know, that place on South Monroe. The design standards for that are elevated. We would like to have that type of aesthetic appeal in some other areas of town, especially where we've made huge public investments on intersections and other key sections of gateways, right? So I just wanted to thank Artie and his team for working on that. It's something I, there's a lot of good work that's going into this. One of the things I'm going to be paying particular attention about is that piece coming back, right? This is a carrot, not a stick approach. So it's basically reaching out to the property owners and saying, if you are willing to implement higher design standards on this renovation or on this development, we will give you, we will offer you design incentives such as increased density, increased intensity on the commercial property. Those types of things, I think, is a really helpful trade-off to encourage people to voluntarily elevate their design standards. I think that's really important. Another offshoot of this is the lake protection zone within surrounding Lake Jackson or just south of Lake Jackson. One design incentive that we can offer property owners in those areas are helping commercial strip malls that might be non-conforming now on the books. If they're able to improve their water quality on site, as well as those design standards, we can switch them over to conforming status, which is really helpful. And Artie and I have talked about that as well. And just, I want to thank you guys for working on those, those are important pieces. It's a way for us to, again, maximize the return on our public investment dollars and making sure that we encourage the private sector to upscale their development as well. One thing I did want to talk about, and if you take a look at when we have the policy published, or when we're going to get back and talk about policy, it's March 11th. And then we have a transmit, joint comp plan transmittal hearing on April 8th, I think. And talking with some folks around the community, and there's a land conservation team I've been talking with, you have met with them as well, we've been talking about extending that timeline, because right now that's less than a month between when we meet to discuss and deliberate policies and when we actually transmit it to the state. So I want to kind of gauge the mood of the body here and see if we could add a few weeks to that, like three or four weeks. This is the comp plan, we're going to be basically determining for the next 20 to 30 years how we grow in Leon County. I think it makes sense for us to take another three or four weeks, meet with the community, talk with folks like the land conservation organizations out there, talk with constituents, talk with builders, and make sure that what we're planning on for the next 20, 30 years is something that is done the right way. So I don't know if you want to make a motion or a friendly amendment to the motion on the floor? Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Minor, I think if we start getting into those conversations, we're going to be hard pressed for time here. I feel like this has been going on for a long time. No one's beating my door down, asking for more time to, you know, understand what's going on. So I would not support that motion if you're trying to make a motion to add time to the timeframe personally. And if we get into a hot debate on it, we're going to be stuck here. So Commissioner.
Let me, if I assault the floor, sir?
Sure.
Let me go ahead and make the friendly amendment motion. And if it, if the body here doesn't want to do that, that's fine, but I just, I know we've been talking about the comp plan for a long time, but this is the first time we've talked about the scheduling of the dates. And we only have an hour for the workshop, I get it, but this is important, you know? And so I don't want to get into a big conflict here, but my opinion is that we should give ourselves more time. So I'll offer the friendly amendment, and we'll see where that goes.
Do you want to clarify that a little more?
Yes, so I think Commissioner Maddox made the amendment. I'd like to request an amendment to that, option one, plus adding three or four weeks to the time between when we actually see the policies and when we transmit.
Go ahead, Commissioner Maddox, and then Commissioner Porter after you.
We can look at the schedule and kind of confirm and propose the dates that would align with kind of three or four additional weeks. For what it's worth, as we release the goals, objectives and policies, we intend to do so with a crosswalk so that someone can look and see, here are the current goals, objectives and policies, and here's where they are in the proposed land use and mobility elements. And really wanting to try to make sure that it's as easy for people to review as possible. But in terms of the schedule, we have the proposed dates, but if we need to look at three or four weeks, I can look at the schedule and come up with that.
Okay.
I'll look something.
All right, okay, so Commissioner Porter, and then Mayor Daley after that.
Thank you, I have other comments, but what I wanted was to clarify what, because option one, what that even really entailed, as far as I read it, it just means we're having the workshop today and accepting the report. And it didn't give specific guidance on a timeline. So I'm in support of that, I just wanted to clarify what the original motion was.
It's just as simple as accepting the staff report. And then these are suggestions that we're making that we will kind of vote on and approve. So, I mean, it opens up Pandora's box here, again, mine end up with 20 different amendments to this thing. But, look, you guys will, okay? So, Mr. Mayor, you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, from a procedural standpoint, and you're the chair, you're chambers, whatever you want to do, remember that we are actually not sitting as a joint body. We are sitting as a city, a county in a joint workshop, which means there'll have to be a motion on the county side and then a motion on the city side. If I can make a suggestion, and if the maker of the friendly amendment would be willing, can we go back and maybe take them? I think that we got consensus on the recommended action. Go ahead, clear that motion out.
Okay.
And then come back and take these individual, I would hate to get in a situation where we have a series of amendments that might pass on the county side. I have no idea if they would pass on the city side. And then we run out of time, and all of a sudden there is no joint collective action between the two, and we're sending them to staff. So I defer to you, Mr. Chairman, how would you like?
Yeah, I mean, this is my concern, this is going to get off the rails real quick. If we want to go ahead and just vote on option one, and we still have to vote separately, right? So the county commission can vote, and then we can come back and deal with these amendments. And then I don't know really how we do that in an orderly fashion either, if we take up each amendment as each board separately. So we take up this one as the county, you guys take it up, if you don't pass it, it doesn't go anywhere. So just going to take a lot of time in that way, we haven't even gotten past our first speaker. So Commissioner Minor, would you be willing to withdraw that and just take us back to the original motion to approve? And we can go ahead and vote and approve the workshop, the report, and then we can make these amendments that can be incorporated into it before our next meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to do that, as long as we're able to get back to that motion, yes, thank you.
Okay, so now let's go ahead and vote as the county on Commissioner Minor's, I mean Commissioner Maddox's original motion to accept staff recommendation of the report. And we're going to get back to these amendments and stuff, Commissioner O'Keefe. We're just trying to move the ball down the field here, all right? It'll still get incorporated, so don't panic. All right, so for the county members, all those in favor of that, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. I haven't recognized you, Commissioner O'Keefe. We're going to now go to the city, we're voting on the staff recommendation. These, in any. We're, we're voting on the staff recommendation. These, and any amendments that you guys want to make can be incorporated into it later.
I support.
We never get out of here, man. All right, Mr. Mayor, you go ahead and do your vote.
Mr. Chairman, do you have any public comment on the recommended? Your chambers, your discretion.
I don't think we take public comment at workshops.
Okay. Is there a motion for the recommended action on the city of Tallahassee side? Okay, it's been properly moved by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Mr. Chairman?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Commissioner Minor, we're back to your individual amendment, or I guess we would have, I don't know how we conduct this in good posture, other than call it just a list, a bulleted list of suggestions, and we'll just start with yours as number one. And so Commissioner Minor's got a suggestion that we push out the timeline three or four weeks on, on the next, from the next step to the final transmittal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, my motion was, because right now, the, the joint public hearing that we have on policies is scheduled for March 11th. The joint public hearing for transmittal is on April 8th, so that's less than a month. What I'd like to do is, is add three or four weeks between the time of when we see, when we meet on the policies and when we transmit.
Hey, we got a motion, is there a second? I guess this has to be just amongst the county. That's just going to take forever.
It's all right.
Anybody, okay, we got a second on the county, Commissioner O'Keefe, we're in discussion. Any discussion? Are we going to do discussion as a whole, or are we going to do discussion as individual groups?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I just want to add a point because we're all to this. This has been going on for a long time, but it's, it's, no one has seen the policies. No one has seen the data. No one has seen the analysis. No one. It hasn't, as far as I know, we haven't seen it. It's not complete yet. That's really the meat of what the input is based on. So although we've had incredible community engagement, and I'm supportive of the direction we're going in, it's all been at a very high level. The policies are where the legal accountability is. So I really, I just want to emphasize that it's not just that we've only seen this for a week, and, but everything else we've all had access to for two years. We haven't seen the final product. We haven't even seen most of the final product. What we have currently is over like 150 pages in our current land use element, and we've seen like, you know, 10 pages of, of the goals. And it's all great, but I just want to make that clear, that we have not seen 90% of what would come before us to approve and before the public to mull over, provide input on, and, and then going from there. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Again, I don't think we want to get into raging debates here. You can vote yes or no. It's fine. So we have to get through this as a county side, and then can I come back to the, you guys, and you can have, you could save those comments for the city side. Commissioner Proctor, you got any thoughts on it?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, good evening. I feel like we're being excluded, even though we're sitting at the table. Two people have talked, Mr. Chairman. We've already taken the vote on what staff's recommendations were. So I don't even know what I come here for. But you, you would allow us to make separate amendments subsequent to the motion that staff has made. I don't like being a commissioner, and the staff does all the policymaking, and there's no deliberation. The south side has been caught into the vortex of growth on the northeast side for the last numbers of years. And in terms of the rural development aspect, we're caught in the upper echelon, upper echelons of this puritanical thought about save the rural. I would like to see a waiver of the rural standards that's so pristine to other sides of town. We need to waive rural in anticipation of affordable housing on the south side. Every and anything south of Parkway, Appalachian Parkway or 27, everything south of 90, we need to review that. And I think that as we have, over the years, our staff, through its pristine views, are not offering legislative ideas that are looking at the differences of the economy affordability in our community. We have, we have grown up Crawfordville and Midway, all because of the failure to differentiate the needs of, as well as the acceptance of the south side, to have that rule broken down to something smaller than one house per 10 acre. I'd like to make the motion that staff would bring back to us, some considerations for a relaxed standard outside of the rural categories, and let the south side be free to be a smaller, more attainable, accessible use of people's property in that area. Motion.
Commissioner Proctor, we got to deal with this motion that we got on the table right now. When we get to you, you can make that motion again, if you don't mind. So do you have any comments on Commissioner Minor's suggestion of prolonging the timeline?
Well, absolutely. I said initially that there's been no discussion.
That's the item we're on.
Right, I support what he's saying.
Wait, this is your time to have that discussion?
No, I support what, that's what you're.
Okay, so we're going to have to go through every commissioner, let them, I mean, if they want to comment or discuss on his motion, then we're going to have to do that with every single one of us at this point. So we have, the timeline's out the window. So we're going to come back to your, when we get to you, initially, we're going to go to everybody. When we get to you, you can bring that back up, and we'll have a discussion on it, and we'll vote on it. But the city's got to do the same thing. So Commissioner Maddox, I mean, Commissioner O'Keefe, Maddox, if you have anyone who wants to go.
So if I could ask Artie a question, Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
I'm a little confused on the purpose today. What are you looking, what direction are you looking from, for, from us today?
Yeah, the, the direction we're looking for today is getting buy-in on the goals and objectives. We've started developing policies, but before we kind of get too far down the road of developing finalized, polished policies, we don't want to bring those back and say, well, I didn't like this goal to begin with. Why'd you write all these objectives and policies? So it's really kind of the approach, the goals, the objectives that I laid out, and then kind of that framework for how we would develop the future land use map. If everyone agrees that this is the direction we're going, we'll write policies that support that. But if we're told to do something completely different, then we'll need to reevaluate that.
So we talk about, so timeline is a part of the goals and?
Right, right.
What kind of direction you're looking for today? More specifics on policy, you're not necessarily, we're not at that point yet?
Not necessarily.
So we have an opportunity of their specific policy, things that we'd like for you to develop, we, we could bring those forward, and, and another meeting, you guys would, would develop those things?
I mean, you could give us the, the general guidance now, and we'll use that to, to write those policies. So now would be a good time to, to kind of get that broad direction.
Okay, all right. As, as Commissioner Proctor said, I've done this for a while now, and I know we're trying to stay on the timeline, but if it takes time, it takes time. And staff is looking for directions. This is the time we have, we have to give them direction. I, I agree with the extra time for constituents and stakeholders to have a, have a, have a say in this thing. I don't, I don't think, I think your point was well put in 20, 30 years. This is what we're planning for. So as much input that we can get from our citizens, if we have time to, to give them extra time, I think it works out better for all of us, and we can say that we, we crossed that road. Commissioner Proctor, when it does come to policy that you're, that you're trying to look at, I think we've talked about for a long time. Staff brings it back, Artie, I'm sorry, one last question. If we, if we have a policy direction for you, and you bring it back, we have an opportunity for, to, to look at all the analysis of things you put into that policy, and then make a decision based off, based off of it?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. Just to have it come back, and I'm saying it now, Mr. Chair, so I won't have to say it later. I don't, I don't mind having it come back, but we've had this conversation a few times about the urban core versus the rural areas and our, the rural areas as well as our urban fringe, and, and trying to make sure that we're pushing development into the urban core and not as much in the, in the, in the rural areas. Now, to, to some, to that point, I think when we're looking at what I would call the townships that we have in Leon County, where you're talking about Woodville, Bradfordville, Fort Braden, I mean, they're not, they're not incorporated, but I do think them is, is on their own little towns, to have intense development within those areas, I'm not opposed to as well as looking at developing a policy in that way. But to, just to say, in the rural area and just out of line areas that, that aren't closer to that core, of even those townships, I think I'm going to have a harder time because of the, my concern about urban, urban sprawl. But I would like to see what staff brings back in a way of, of how that could work, if, if that's something we're, we're willing to look at.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair?
On, on point. Commissioner Proctor, can we get past the timeline issue before we get back to the debate on the rural area? Commissioner O'Keefe, you got any comments on the timeline?
Mr. Chairman, my only comment is, are we still going around to actually get to comment on?
Yeah, we're going to have to come back and do that, too. So let the record reflect. We ain't having no South Side Action Plan Workshop at 3 o'clock.
I'll pass on the timeline to save time for that.
Okay. Commissioner Coman? Okay, so I think that's, that's all the county. We're voting on Commissioner Minor's motion to, to extend the timeline, which was, I guess, standalone. Who was the second? Oh, it was O'Keefe, I'm sorry. Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Passing unanimously. Commissioner Mayor?
So on the center side, is there someone that would like to sponsor the, the motion on our side?
So move.
Second.
Probably moved by Commissioner Matlow, seconded by Commissioner Porter. I will respectfully be voting against, and I agree with the chairman. We've been working on this for over three years. We've had well over two dozen community meetings, and I feel comfortable with the timeline, as presumed. Any further comment? Commissioner Porter?
I just want to reiterate again. I mean, according to what Artie just said, the policies haven't even been written. We haven't even given the, the go-ahead, the goals. This is one of the most important things we do as a local government, second to the budget. I don't see how four weeks, one more meeting is, is worth objecting to. I think it's really, really, really important. The policies haven't even been written. And every meeting that we go to where residents come to us, and they, and our hands are tied sometimes because of what the comprehensive plan says, this is the opportunity to get that feedback and incorporate it. So I just can't emphasize enough how important I think this is, and I know that you agree, but the policies haven't even been written. 90%. There's no data or analysis that we have seen. Everything that comes to, what it's going to cost to build and maintain infrastructure under different growth scenarios. All of these things have consequences, as we know. If we zone something a certain way, if we make changes to the rural, to the USA or whatever, that all has enormous consequences to how we, we budget, how we plan. I just don't see any harm. So I just, I need to say for the record how important I think this is. I really implore my colleagues to support one more meeting, four more weeks. I don't think it does any harm. It only can do good. Mr. Mayor?
I've got Commissioner Matlow first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I just hope we could all just take a deep breath. I'm not sure where we're at, why we're rushing through in one hour. I know the taxpayers pay us all very well to come and have these conversations and want to hear from their elected officials. On, on the timeline, I, I agree with Commissioner Porter, I think, you know, giving people the time that they feel they need to review only leads to better compromise, only leads to better, better outcomes. And I think if this meeting's rushed in an hour, and then the community feels like it's rushed, we're going to get criticized. We will. And I think we can preempt that by giving enough time for people to come together and, and make their comments known. That's all I'll say on this, because I know we are short for time.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't think that anyone's saying that we wouldn't be able to look at the policies, we wouldn't just meet and pass them. We just, when we receive it, when we receive this information, it would be incumbent upon us to do our best to make sure that we do the due diligence as necessary in the time that has been allotted. Because the more time you have, the more time it'll take. And we have been doing this a long time, and people are waiting for us to, to, to put, get something in place. And you're right, Commissioner Porter, whenever we've met, we've always, our hands are tied, but these are things that were done 30 years ago. And we've sat around this table many meetings in the past few years, harboring what to do and how to do it. And we have a consultant we've hired to help with this process. That costs money. And as Commissioner Matlow just said, we're paid well to do what we do. And so we just need to do it in the time that's allotted, is where, where I am. I'm ready to do it.
Commissioner Richardson, you're the one ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree, Mr. Mayor, with you and, and the, the mayor pro tem. You know, in, in the briefing that I had with staff, I mean, this has been worked on for two or three years now. There have been lots of opportunities, as we saw from the slide presentation, for the public to have input. I, Commissioner Minor, have not had the kind of input that you suggested you've had from members in the community. I was at NEBA today, and, you know, I don't know if they were aware of this workshop, but that issue did, didn't come up from that organization. And certainly, they would have had a concern, a, an interest in what we were doing here this afternoon, but I have not had that kind of input. And, and I think we need to go ahead and move forward with this process. Artie and his staff have done a phenomenal job, I think, and I don't know that three weeks and more public hearings where we might have 10 or 12 people show up is going to have that much of an impact. I like what they've accomplished here, especially the goals dealing, Commissioner Proctor, with healthy neighborhoods, including the South Side Action Plan, and what we're looking at in terms of the housing diversity, which has been certainly a priority of mine since I've been on the commission for the last 10 years. So I would not support extending the time that we take to review this item again.
Mr. Mayor?
The motion on, I'm going to go ahead and take the vote in the spirit of cooperation with 15 minutes left.
May I please, I asked a question of the city attorney. It's relevant to the motion.
Sure. Commissioner Porter, on point with the city attorney?
Thank you. I had asked the city attorney what impact, whether, if, if this fails on the city side, what happens just overall? And I want to hear what you say, and I also want to implore my colleagues at the city before you vote, that this was just passed unanimously by the county. And I do believe, out of respect for our county colleagues who we collaborate on this, that it would be a measure of goodwill to, to move forward together. But Madam City Attorney?
So this is an unusual circumstance, so I'm not completely certain. I would also maybe look to the county attorneys for some assistance, but it, you are operating as two separate boards in this setting. The difference in the votes would create a situation, I believe, where the county could, could extend the time, and then the city wouldn't because they have voted in that way. But that, I'm, I'm not completely, honestly, completely certain what that would look like practically.
Well, let me chime in, because from my experience, we will be transmitting these separately. We will not be transmitting this at a joint meeting, which simply means that the city would transmit three weeks before the county. And in deference to my county colleagues, I agree, and it sounds like they might need a little extra time to talk about the townships in the unincorporated area, which is outside of the city limits. And of course, I support that 100%. So I don't have a problem with the city moving forward with transmittal and supporting the recommended action of the timeline. And if the county wants to spend more time specifically on some of the other ideas in the unincorporated townships, I think it's appropriate. So I'm not going to support the motion on the table. The motion was made by Commissioner Matlow, and, uh, seconded by Commissioner Porter. All those in favor of the motion on table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and the motion fails 3 to 2 with the mayor, mayor pro tem, and Commissioner Richardson in, against. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, for an order, do you want to go to your board now, see if there's any individual issues, or we just want to go off? I don't want you all to sit here for a long time. So if you guys want to, we can bounce back and forth. I can do Commissioner Richardson, then we go Commissioner Proctor, then we go to Commissioner Glenn Cox, then we go to Commissioner O'Keefe, you see what I'm saying? So Commissioner Richardson, you have anything you want to?
I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Now we are to Commissioner Proctor.
What I'm trying to say, Commissioners, is if we're going to get a policy for the next 30 years that continues to lock the south side's growth and development, the opening of new lands, possibilities, we need a different rule that is not universal. And I said we're caught in the vortex of northeast planting and growth. We don't want that. We, we shouldn't be caught up in a thought central to someplace else that is not our reality, our affordability. I'm asking this board to strip the southern part of our county away from the old oppressive, suppressive, repressive policies of rural, one house on 10 acres. It, and, and, and our staff gives us a And 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 our staff gives us attachment to. I fail to believe that over the next 30 years, in the county, there's a projection of nearly 0% growth. If this if this map is being read correctly by me, from 2020 to 2050, there is there is no growth in the unincorporated area. I disbelieve that. I disbelieve over the next 30 years that this number and this graph on attachment to page 2 of 6 is accurate. That's why we need to free, we need to free the southern part of the community. It matches the demographics more so of the people who are building Crawfordville, the people who are building Midway, all of those things. So I make that motion that we have a look at the southern hemisphere of our community and to create a more palatable geographic region with rural being re-designated to something else or eliminated.
Coman has a question on point, and then Artie, you provide some clarity to that idea.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, everybody. Commissioner Proctor, I support the spirit of your motion, but I do want to backtrack very briefly, because in our in our retreat that we just had early this January, we unanimously voted for to conduct a Woodville Sense of Place study. So I think the long term plan of that study is for us to eventually look at rezoning properties and take another approach of Woodville. So I support the spirit of your motion. What I, my question I have written down right here was to ask Artie when it was my turn to speak, was does the, does this comp plan incorporate the planning of a Sense of Place study in Woodville that was at the direction of our county earlier this year?
Absolutely, and I think-
And before we seek a second on that motion, Artie, can you answer his question and clarify what Commissioner Proctor's asking?
Yeah, I think I can provide clarification kind of across the board, because we we have done a series of analyses. They'll come back with the policies when we look at like the policy for the rural land use category. Basically, kind of based on our analysis so far, we wouldn't necessarily be looking at a wholesale change to the rural land use category across Leon County, looking at like the north side, south side, everything. But there are specific areas on the south side, especially where sewer service has been extended through all the septic sewer projects, that previously weren't really able to be developed because of that lack of infrastructure. We are looking at where that infrastructure is going, and does that increase the possibility, specifically on the south side, for increasing those densities and intensities from 1 unit to 10 to something higher density, because now there's that infrastructure? And then there's areas, actually a few within and some adjacent to the urban service area, that if we look at future growth, may go from rural to something more dense, particularly on the south side. With regards to the sense of place, I do see this project and the Woodville Sense of Place going hand in hand. And then anything that comes out of that effort above and beyond what we address here would be addressed in the Leon County Land Development Code. So I see them as complementary efforts, especially looking at the Woodville area, and should it be expanded, and should areas become more dense, especially with the the extension of sewer to those areas.
I just have a question. Artie, are we, we're not changing, talking about changing densities from one to one per 10 acres?
Not a wholesale change to rural, just looking at very targeted, specific areas.
Artie, so my question is, as as the Sense of Place study is going to be conducted, which I imagine will start sometime this year, will we be adapting our land use in Woodville, specifically, which I believe is what Commissioner Proctor's referencing? So as septic to sewers is, the project is coming to completion, and as we are getting more information from the Sense of Place study, where we're talking to residents, we're having town halls, that our land use and zoning will adapt if needed with that?
Yes.
Okay. So Commissioner Proctor, I I agree with what you're, what you're, where you're going. I think that's part of the plan, but I think to blatant, to to do it right now would be premature, because we are rolling out that Sense of Place study, so staff is going to be engaging with the community.
Well, I disagree. If we can change-
Wait, wait, Commissioner Proctor, we don't have a second yet.
I had the floor.
I know, but I wanted to get- We need a second, and can you articulate your motion again?
But I wanted to ask only a question. If it's my motion, it is that we diversify or waive the southern spectrum of our community from rural, one house on 10 acres, and and change that, and for staff to bring us back several looks at possibilities there.
Okay. There's a second for that?
Just for clarification, Artie, it sounds like, it sounds like to me, just given what you just said, Artie, isn't that what you, you're already doing it, aren't you?
It is what we're looking at. We're doing an analysis of-
So it sounds like that what you're asking for is already included in what they're doing.
Well, Artie talking about, I've heard for years, what staff is going to be bringing back, I have heard this for over and over and over. We're looking at it. Look, if the 14th Amendment can lose birth as a basis, Gulf of Mexico can be lost overnight, why are we acting so slow? I've been waiting on this for years. I mean, wasn't it all us that's so staff driven? The power to legislate and to make policy is ours. And that side of our community, which is not growing, to the other side, and it ain't going to grow, because as we have it, a developer, a family, would have to pay money, go through the normal growth management processes, money, 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 to change. So if we relax that and go ahead and put some standards that exist, it it won't cause from the beginning part. Now, a big developer comes down there, and they got the money to do this, to do, to do, they can do that. But we are suppressing an area. It don't have to be that way, and we have the juice at the table to change it now. So I'm asking staff, and I'm asking you to support staff bringing back on the southern region of our community, that we have something other than one house. We don't need a one house on 10 acres anywhere in the area. Let's relieve that. We know it's going to grow, even though staff has given us bogus numbers that nobody can really know. But I just believe that there will be no growth over the next 30 years in the unincorporated area. But there will be no growth if you keep the suppression that's in place.
Any other discussion on that? I can tell you, Commissioner Proctor, I would have a problem with that in the northeast, increasing that density from beyond one per 10 acres. So as as long as this is just an analysis by staff, Artie, where you at? As long as this is just an analysis, and this is not going to to consider changing the rural densities in in District 4?
We don't want to change it. I don't care about District 4's densities. I'm talking about District 4's-
Okay, I'm just clarifying, Commissioner Proctor. Do we have any more discussion?
Ain't talking about all that there. That's what I'm telling you. We can't be like them. We're not them.
Any discussion? We still need a second.
Well, I'm trying, I'm trying to, as I understand him, ask the question again, because I'm confused now. You will bring a policy back. I mean, what he's asking for is what you're contemplating and bringing that policy back, correct? If if so warranted in in Woodville area, in the southern part of Leon County?
Right. We're doing analysis of the densities across all of rural.
Year after year.
And we're looking at more targeted on the south side, specific areas that should no longer be rural, that should be a higher density, taking those out of rural and making them a higher density.
So it speaks to that township concept I was talking about earlier, and and so the analysis come back and look at specific areas in town where there's more dense populations?
Yep, right.
Okay, I'm pleased with that. I'll I'll wait till that that comes back, and then we can, we can have to talk about the policy. Thank you.
All right, so we've got a motion and a second. Commissioner Minor, there is no second. Okay, so we got a motion and no second. So guys, we have a second.
What I would ask Commissioner Proctor is, once he brings that information back about the population densities in those specific areas, that then, once we get a chance to look at them, that we that we specify with not just the whole area, but within Woodville, within-
What's the date on that? Has that been moved back for decades? What's the date specific on that, Artie?
That would come back to the the meeting later this spring.
That's quite specific. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, do you guys have any? Mr. Commissioner William Cox? Okay. Commissioner O'Keefe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Only, I'll talk fast. Only good things coming into this meeting-
We ain't making that 3:00, so don't matter. Go ahead, take your time.
All right. So this, I actually like what we have represented here to start with. The, I participated in and observed a lot of the community input and the results that the consultant brought back. And I think this comp plan overall goal setting starts to match our community's goals, which is what a comprehensive plan should do. Everyone is very familiar with long commission meetings where a neighborhood is pitted against a development, and and we may have to say, well, the comp plan rules bind our hands. The reason this is so important is because we don't have wide latitude to overrule or go outside comp plan and land use code. But when we make the comp plan, we have wide latitude to decide what those rules are. And when we set it right and put the community's values in now, we make it so those citizens don't have to do that. We make it so that staff can follow the directions that we give that match the same values that those communities are bringing at what I'll call development by development item meetings. So that's why this is so important, and that's why I was glad to see folks on healthy environment, on balanced transportation network, and on greater housing diversity getting in that missing middle, which I'm just, I think this shows good faith, and I'm hopeful that when we get the final comp plan changes, it will still have these values. And I think what we're going to see is, we are going to have a comp plan that makes more sense to the average person and to the neighborhood, and developers can look at the comp plan and say, yep, this is what the neighborhood's values are, and neighbors can say, yep, we got in what we wanted valued, and it can be a much more orderly, less confusing process. I will say that this is a much too big of an issue for us to have scheduled one hour, and it doesn't make sense to me that we were forced to vote on accepting it before we had discussion. That doesn't make any sense, and so I would just put it out there that we need to schedule ample time for our things instead of coming in and making it a pressure cooker, because we we hit the stop clock. Those are my comments on this, and I like what staff has brought back for now. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Matlow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Top level, I think the goals are good. I think they they encompass what the majority of our community wants to see in one part or the other. I think when we get to the priorities, I mean, that's where we really, the teeth need to be, as we see in our meetings when we have neighborhoods pointing to a goal, but there's not necessarily a priority that's consistent with it. And I think that's why that conversation is going to be so important, because if we do the work upfront, we can save ourselves hours and hours and hours of opposition in the long run. So I do think we should take that time. The the housing types, I think, is great. I think we've long had had this conversation. You know, I think people always, it draws a little bit of concern, but I always tell people, look at low sorbels. It has duplexes, it has quads, it has eight unit apartment complexes, and a nice walkable neighborhood that has increasing property values. I think that's kind of what we want to see all across our city. One thing not contemplated right now, Artie, is I is, and we've had this conversation at the city, I've had this conversation with environmentalists, with the business community, with developers, with neighborhoods, and that's parking minimums, particularly within the urban core and the USA. Here's something we have broad agreement across all sects of our community that we should eliminate them. If I'm building a house and I know that I ride a bike and I take an Uber, we don't need the government telling us I need to build a parking space in front of my house. If I operate a business that I know will only have six customers at a time, we don't need a formula anywhere from the comp plan to the land development code telling us how much parking is needed. So what I would like us to see as part of this process is to Ctrl F parking from the comp plan to the land development code and see what we can eliminate. It's good for the environment, and it'll encourage that infill all across our community. We have huge parking lots that are dead, dead space going to waste, and when we look at how much housing we can build, we don't count that space, because it's taking up by by our parking lot. So I mean, that's just one point and one thing I think we we need to look at. I mean, secondly, I think as it relates to the conservation element and and tree protections and and really bringing down our our carbon footprint as a community and what that means in the way we build. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Matlow. Commissioner Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with with a lot of the comments that have been made. I I like the goals and objectives. I like the direction that we're going in. I don't really have any critique to offer on them in particular, but I can't really give meaningful input without seeing the data, the analysis, the maps of what we're thinking about. And so with what we have, I'm I'm supportive, but there's so much that we don't have that we need in order to give more meaningful feedback. I spoke to Artie in our briefing about this. Obviously, there's no mention of the urban services area in the goals or objectives that will be dealt with in in policy, but that's something that is so important to the way we plan, that as as supreme and out front and center as it can be, I think the better, even if it's, of course, also in policies, and I understand the reason, the reason for that. Some of the objectives, in my opinion, were not clearly measurable, and I think could be, could be cleaned up. I spoke to Artie about this, and I just want to reiterate so that I hope there are changes. The vision plan roadmap, those are just not in consistent syntax, and I think need to be, need to be in consistent syntax. And then finally, I just have to say, I mean, I just think what we've committed right now is political malpractice. This is so important. The way this meeting was scheduled for an hour, I don't know who did that. That should never happen again. The timeline, as was originally presented to us, I believe should never have even been the original timeline, given the limited amount of time to provide feedback on the meat of what we are contemplating here. This is just extremely disappointing and dysfunctional, not what the public expects of us, especially on the issue that is what I hear most about. And when we're making decisions for a legally binding document that will guide the way we grow for decades to come. So I don't want to say that. I don't derive any joy from saying that, but I just, I cannot believe that this is the way we're governing.
Commissioner Maddox?
Mr. Chair, be quick. Is there, before I speak, is there any other Commissioners that want to make any amendments or motions? Mr. Chair? If not, we're about eight minutes over, maybe 10. It's the south side, it don't matter. My point is, is that they they scheduled for an hour, about eight minutes, maybe 10 over, and a lot of the time we spent talking was about the fact that this was only an hour. We had two amendments. We got through the main motion. I think the reason I asked the questions I asked of Artie earlier, and I'm going to extend the time, because I'm talking, was because I wanted understanding of what we were here to do today. What we're here to do today was look specifically at the goals and objectives that they put forth, make whatever changes we wanted to make there, which I think Commissioner Miners' motion did that, gave us some, 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 gave staff some direction on something that we wanted to consider there. But I don't think there was ever intention for for staff to bring forward the meat and potatoes of 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 policy today. That's going to come back later. Now, maybe the argument can be made, maybe they shouldn't have brought this forward at this time for us to look at the goals and objectives, but I'm kind of glad they did, because as Artie said, it gives them indication that at least, golden objectives wise, they're moving in the right direction. I think the workshop was needed. I do think, Commissioner, Mr. Chair, and I, and I don't want you to think I don't appreciate your your push to get us through it, because we do have, do have a 3:00 workshop. I do think even the time allotted, given the fact that after my comments were probably ended, we're about 10, 10 minutes over, wasn't bad. I mean, how many times have we been in a regular meeting and had, you know, just general business, and that lasted seven hours instead of the three hours that was allotted for? So let's, let's give staff a little bit of credit in that they were trying to put forth, give us the opportunity to make, have a quick weigh in on just the goals and objectives, which everybody, as I understand it, said that they were cool with. There were a couple of edits that you had that you thought that we could have dug a little deeper into.
And I edited my comments.
Right, right. But but as far as 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 what they got up there, everybody said it looked relatively good. So I want to thank staff for the time and effort that they put into creating the goals and objectives, and I want to thank them for the time and effort they put into creating this meeting and and actually the thought process of coming to us to ask us, hey, is this along the lines of where you would like us to go? Now, to Commissioner Porter's point, when you come back to us, just as she expected today, I do expect there to be a lot more detail in policy wise, so we can chew on that, so we can talk about Commissioner Proctor's possible amendment or policy that he would like to take up, and other things that other Commissioners, even Commissioner Matlow's parking piece there, which I'm interested in, too. piece there, which I'm interested in too, so we can talk more about that stuff when it comes back. But I think today, I really want us to understand the point here was really for us to look at those goals and objectives, have that conversation. And I think Commissioner Minor did operate in the spirit of that, and I appreciate the motion that you brought forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Caban.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only comment I had about the workshop today was the Woodville Sense of Place study, just making sure that was incorporated. And Artie answered that question, that it would be incorporated as time goes on. So I appreciate everyone's time today. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, Commissioner Caban, thank you. Commissioner Mayor, I think that's it for the county. You guys good? Thank you guys for coming over here. We appreciate you taking the time. Appreciate everybody getting us through. Thank you. We're adjourned.